January 1st, 2022. Regular council meeting, seeing rise for the lead us. Steve, would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All call, please. Here.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Fireball.
Here.
Potter.
Here.
Sherick.
Here.
Spiegel.
Here.
Young. Okay. Before you, you have the rules of procedures for Bussar City Council. I apologize, sir. Yep, sorry.
I'll make the motion to accept.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we have minutes before you as well. January 18th, regular council minutes. Does anybody have any additions or corrections?
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
On all three of the sets of minutes, the link to the audio recording does need to be added to the top, so I would say that I would move to amend all three of those to include the audio link to be included.
I'll second that.
And you're approving all three at once?
No, I'm making a motion to amend all three and then we can vote to approve as amended.
All right. So all three amendments, motion by Mr. Myers, second by Mr. McKeever, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. So as amended, January 18th, 2022, to have the audio link listed. Does anybody else have any other additions or corrections? If not, an entertaining motion to accept.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. January 20th, special council meeting as amended with the website at the top, may have a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. January 27th, with the website audio link at the top, as amended, may have a motion to approve. So moved.
Second.
McKeever?
Brennan.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Granting permission for visitors to speak?
Hello, everybody, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
I'm Jim Richardson, I live at 316 Rivers Street. I'm here today, first thing I want to get across is the splash park that you were talking about last week. I think it's a great thing. I just found out about it. I personally am going to donate to it and I'm going to start putting the word out. But I'm here tonight because, one thing, I live in this beautiful 200-year-old city. I think it looks great. I think it has plenty of parks. I have no qualms with this town whatsoever. We've got plenty of walk paths, but my issue tonight is my streets. I paid $5 a tax on my license plates to drive on these streets and I kind of feel their mind and anybody else that lives in this town. So my biggest street concern is East Mansfield Street. We've got businesses just keep building out that way. Got all these parts stores, Millers Drive-In, two banks. But we're forgetting one very important thing that's on East Mansfield Street and that's the Ohio Health Urgent Care. And I'm here because councilperson Sherick and the mayor had discrepancies about where our money should be spent. She was talking about people walking alongside this street and on this street. Mayor, his words? I've never seen that. Well, I have. I've almost run over three or four people on that street, let alone putting up with irresponsible drivers that are texting. It's ridiculous. It is absolutely ridiculous. I hate driving that street. When you go out there, any time of the day, there's 15 cars that'll go through one light and you've got car after car after car. Now, the urgent care, when that got put in, I thought for sure that the city would take the responsibilities and put a sidewalk in so if a mother has a sick baby, she can walk out there safely, but yet we've got you guys arguing over $605,000. $605,000 is cheap, so I know people that give a million to give their loved ones back from the dead. It's ridiculous. There shouldn't be no argument about sidewalks on Mansfield Street. They should be put in, period. We've got three county commissioners that agree. So I'm telling you, all of you, you need to get your priorities right, redirect them. I would like for each and every one of you to do your elected responsibilities and I want you to put the needs and the safety of the people of Bussiris first and get those pedestrians off my streets, because if I accidentally run over a baby, it ain't going to be pretty. And I've had children run out in front of me. And I'm begging you, please, do something about East Mansfield Street before somebody does get killed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Vicki Deshaun, 1108 Hillcrest Drive. I have a prepared speech, which I'm going to read in a few minutes, but I have a couple of questions first. The council rules of procedure that you just approved, why were those not on the council agenda?
So I, we actually forgot to include them. We just realized, I have a copy if you'd like it, but we just got them in the packets before this meeting. That was my fault. I forgot to put them on the agenda. Like, we actually, if you noticed on the agenda you have, I had to read you the front page even. It was just something we just caught.
I think the public should know that with the passage of these council rules of procedure, council has now decided that when the public wants to come up and speak, we were allowed five minutes before, now we're only allowed three minutes. And because I didn't know that this was going to be passed tonight, very possibly my prepared speech will go over the three minutes and I'm hoping that I will be allotted the time to finish my reading. On January 20th, 2022, the Special Ad-Hoc Committee on Council Rules and Procedures met to discuss council rules and procedures and BCO 111 and 113 as identified in the meeting notice. At this meeting, committee member Myers stated that he and the council clerk would work on making all the changes discussed, send an email with the changes to committee members, council members, and myself, so we would have appropriate time to look over and notify immediately of anything missed before the scheduled January 27th, 2022 Special Ad-Hoc Committee meeting. I did not receive that email with the changes for my review and comment. Can you explain why an email was not sent to me?
No, I don't have an answer for you. I sent it on to the committee members and to the clerk and I did not send it anywhere else.
Even though you stated at the January 20th meeting that I would be included in that email?
You're correct.
Okay, also, the packet containing the changes to the rules of council did not appear on documents on demand for the January 27th, 2022 Special Ad-Hoc Committee meeting. Can you explain why this was not done?
So I actually can ask that? Okay, so you're saying like on the 27th packet, it wasn't included?
The only thing was the agenda, was not the corrected rules of procedure.
Again, was my error. I don't know what happened. I'll check through and see why, why I must have only opposed to the agenda. That's my fault. I'm learning. I really, and I, I will take the fault here, but it's, it's a process. Everybody's really trying to work together right now.
And, and I, and I totally understand that. It's just, it's being done on everything else. I'm looking at all the committee meetings and there's the agenda packet and it's got all the attachments for the annexation of, you know, the interim law director's property. Transparency is not happening here and there's too much of this. I'm sorry, I forgot. And you're doing a lot of forgetting when it comes to seeing that I receive things, that you say I'm going to receive or that you say you're going to put on documents on demand. That's, that's, that's just how I see it. Further, in reading the October 19th, 2021 Bussar City Council regular meeting minutes, I found the following. Law Director's Report. Gernert then spoke on the procedure for minutes. He suggested that the video or audio format is not a consideration that he would recommend. McKeever asked if this could be handled by Finance Committee or if there should be an ad hoc committee formed. Vermillion named an ad hoc committee with Sherick, Myers, McKeever, and me. The following Special Ad-Hoc Committee meetings were scheduled to discuss policies and procedures, council's rules and procedures, BCO 111 and 113, and BCO Sections 111 and 113 as identified in the meeting notices. October 21, 2021 meeting with members identified as Sherick, McKeever, Myers, and me. December 9th, 2021, January 6th, 2022, January 10th, 2022, January 20th, 2022, and January 27th, 2022 meetings were held or were scheduled with members identified as Sherick, McKeever, Myers, and Vermillion.
Excuse me, you're at five minutes, so thank you. If you have anything further, you can be free to email it. Thank you.
You are really not going to let me finish this one last?
Well, we just passed rules and procedures for three minutes. You complained that three minutes wasn't long enough, so we went five, which was the original, and you're going to extend past that. So I'm going to call five minutes.
I complained, yes, that three minutes is not enough time.
I understand that.
And I prepared my speech.
And during our discussions, if I may, during our discussions, prior to this being passed, it was brought up that you were able to bring your point to order in three minutes. So there was no point to go any further than five.
Who said that?
It was pointed out that you were able to make your point in three minutes.
And I have not, as Councilman McKeever has pointed out, I have not reiterated anything. I have read, I've not repeated the same thing over and over. I am pleased asking, you have the discretion to allow me?
Yes, I do. And I called it five minutes. Thank you. You have further to say, you can email it. Thank you. Let's proceed. Do we have any communications or petitions? Nope. All right. Standing Committee reports, plating?
Mr. Richardson has something to say.
Mr. Sean would like for me to read this last paragraph.
Mr. Richardson, are you doing this consensually?
Pardon?
Are you doing this consensually?
As far as agreeing with this?
Yeah.
I would agree to read it for her, yes. But whatever she says, I don't know, I don't have my opinion on this whatsoever. But she would like for me to finish this last paragraph for her. May I?
You don't have the permission, you have three minutes to speak on any subject.
Vicki, we just did our communication with petitions while you were back there, so we already passed that. We've, we've gone past. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, John.
You are not on the committee. You are not on the ad hoc committee.
No, ma'am, I am not, but I am running this meeting.
But you, you had gone to a meeting and voted and you're not on that meeting. Nowhere in the council minutes, council minutes or committee minutes were you appointed to replace me.
Replace you?
Me. Jim me. Jim me is the one that you place on that committee for ad hoc, for council rules and procedures. You're not on that committee, but you've been attending, you attended the meeting on Jan, on December the 9th, then January 6th, and I know the meeting's in January, Mr. Me is no longer a council member.
Point of order.
Yes, Mr. McKeever.
We will proceed with, going on with communications and petitions. We'll investigate this.
I have to question then the passage.
Standing Committee reports, plating?
I don't have anything at this moment.
Public lands and buildings?
No, I have nothing of the type.
Health and safety?
No report, Madam President.
Finance?
No report.
Economic development?
No report.
Service?
No report, it's time.
Traffic Commission, Mr. Mayor?
Nothing to report for traffic, Madam President.
All right, moving on to reported city officials. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. Just about halfway through weather, everybody knows that we got a storm coming and we hope this will be the last. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thanks, Sean. So anyway, thank you again, Madam President. Ask everybody to monitor the weather tomorrow night, please, stay safe. And if you see our snow plows out, which I'm sure you will, give them a wide berth. Just to let you know, they've been doing a fantastic job. We have several new people that are learning their ropes. We lost four people through retirements and of course, Mr. Schuster passed away, a very reliable person in the Streets Department. And just have some patience. The more snow, the more patience is needed, right? Jeff Dunn does a great job. We said goodbye last week to Gary Frankhouse, who did another fine job leading the economic development effort in Bussiris and Crawford County. He recognized that economic development is more than attracting jobs, it's developing a workforce that meshes with the jobs that you are attracting and the jobs that you have. And he was excellent in that and maintaining relationships with the area employers and the area schools. And so many changes came about during his tenure. So I also realized that quality of life issues that were very important in attracting young families, very important to them today, and we want to thank him. He'll be missed. I know they're, I have an executive committee to interview people. I've already had some good applications and we'll see how that goes. Speaking of quality of life issues, you will be voting this evening on several issues that will be critical in improving Bussiris. There's lots of needs out there. We have millions and millions of dollars of needs, but I think the voting that you did out of committee of investing in the future here that everyone can use from every 12, all 12,000 citizens plus visitors to our committee can use that in the splash parks and, and the paths that we have in plan. One, one thing to keep in mind here, the, these are critically important for use because we need to improve our health, especially coming out of a pandemic, a lot of physical and mental health issues especially. And it's been shown that getting outside is critical to maintaining good mental health. Congratulations to Governor, Lieutenant Governor, for landing Intel Semiconductor Plant. We're already working on a plan to ensure that Bussiris is chosen for a spinoff plant by researching where their plants are now and who their spinoffs, factories are, and the same way we did for attracting suppliers for Honda. And I think that would be a very good goal if we can get, you know, one, two, three of those plants here in the next several years. So real briefly, I know Joyce is going to mention this, but tax revenue was up slightly in January, reports came out today. I know the last two Januaries have been exceptional and to be able to match those figures from last year was, was very good. We, we're not sure because of places being closed, shortened hours right in the height of COVID, so things have actually looking up and we'll just hope and pray that it continues. That's all I have for my report. Do you want me to go into service?
Yes, if you would, please. Thank you.
Jeff's got some referrals. The ambulance building on North Sandusky to public lands and buildings and finance. The 2022 salt bids to service and finance. And the north-
Mr. Mayor, that's, that's listed under materials, the number two, is for the salt?
No, that's different. Material bids are different, yeah. That's going to be different. And then we, the last one for a referral is North Robinson Waterline Project. Going to possibly do some expansion there. Material bids are different. They're being advertised, will be opened on February 15th at 10:00 a.m., right here in the City Council Chambers. Farmland bids are also being advertised right now and it will be open on March 1st at 10:00 a.m. here in council chambers. Every five years, we're required to go out for what's called RFQs, Request for Quotes for the airport. That's an order from the FAA, Federal Aviation Administration, and we need to send out those every five years. So we're working on those right now. Partridge Road is coming quickly. Even in a nasty month, we're, we're getting ready to fire it up. And if anybody on Partridge Road is still thinking of getting water, let us know. Need lifeguards for the pool this year. Not too early to start there. So if anybody is interested in being a lifeguard, please stop up at the mayor's office for an application. And one more, I guess there is one more referral. The traffic light project would go to health and safety and finance. Jeff Dunn will be here at the next committee meetings to discuss some ideas on traffic lights. And that's all for Jeff's report.
And you said the salt?
Yeah, salt, salt's going to go to service and finance.
All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Law Director? I'm sorry?
We need to vote to, for the referrals.
Oh, I'm sorry. Jump in the bin. All right, so we have the ambulance building referral to public lands and buildings and finance.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We've got the salt purchase referral to service and finance.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. The North Robin, Rob, sorry, North Robinson Waterline Expansion Referral to?
Service.
Service? So moved.
Second.
Service and finance.
Service and finance?
Service and finance.
I amend that to? You amend to service and finance? Yes. Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The traffic light project to health and safety and finance?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Did I miss anything?
I think you got it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Now, Mr. Law Director.
Thank you, Madam President. Nothing really to update as far as the law director's office goes. Business as usual. There was a question about committee sizes and if our committees were four members, does this create an actual meeting? I did some research into other municipalities, some research into case law, spoke with a officer from the Attorney General's Office and some fellow law directors, and the general consensus is the size of committees is inconsequential, provided all of the notice and public meeting requirements are met. So if council's happy with four-member committees, then that's well and good. Multiple of the places that I looked at had, Toledo has 12 members on their council and they have a committee with eight of their 12 members on that council. They also have a different committee with three members on that council, so I'm not sure why the difference in that, but based upon my research, as long as the important part is obviously to have public meeting notice and requirement and make sure we meet all of those. That's my answer.
Thank you. Mrs. Shipper?
Thank you, Madam President. You have my mock and reports, the statement of cap position, you've got interim cap comparisons. I did see though that there's only one side of this that was printed, should be another page to this, so we can get that. As the mayor mentioned, it's- As the mayor mentioned, the revenues were up 1% for this month as compared to last year. We'll, we'll see how things go. It always varies, but it looks like a good start to the year. But our revenue tallies to budget aren't all right at target at this point, but like I say, that, that varies depending on when various monies come in. So review and if you have any questions, you can give me a call or shoot me an email and I'll be glad to meet with you or, or get you an answer as soon as I can. And the, the best part of my report tonight is I have no referrals.
Treasurer's report. Don't have a motion to, we don't have one?
No, I haven't got anything, though.
No, we don't even have the bank statements yet for her to be able to reconcile, so. No report from Chief Ostenheimer or Chief Schwamlee?
Schwamlee said he'll have his next report.
We do have Ostenheimer. Okay. Mr. Myers, would you like to read that first?
Be happy to. Monthly report for January 2022 for the police department. Bussar's police officers were involved in a total of 602 incidents, 91 traffic stops in which 14 tickets were issued. Of those tickets, 10 were for driving under suspension. Two people were arrested for operating a vehicle while intoxicated. Officers made five felony drug arrests in January. On January 26th, 2022, Officer Wireman made a traffic stop in the area of Shaber and Fremont Street. During the stop, the officer observed the driver reaching in his pockets and despite several requests to stop doing so, the driver continued to reach into his pockets. The officer got the man out of, out to perform a pat-down, at which time a violent fight ensued, with the officer being struck in the face and the suspect grabbed for the officer's pistol. The suspect eventually broke free and fled, but was apprehended a couple of minutes later without further incident. A search of the car turned up a loaded pistol and drug paraphernalia. The suspect is being held in jail and his case will be presented to the grand jury. On January 29th, 2022, Officer Wireman attempted a traffic stop in the area of East Irving and Plymouth Street. The driver of the vehicle fled and a car chase began. The male driver ran on foot in the area of Earl Street and Wilbur Street. He was apprehended by a second officer. Marijuana suspected cocaine and cash was recovered from the driver and vehicle. The suspect is being held in jail and his case will be presented to the grand jury. Officers responded to 29 domestic calls, zero overdoses, eight assaults, 13 traffic crashes, five private- crashes, five private property crashes, 41 vehicle lockouts, and 14 larceny complaints. And dispatchers handled 27 emergency medical dispatch calls.
Thank you very much. All the zero overdoses is-
That's good news.
That is good news after being number three at one point per capita in the state of Ohio. Do I have a motion to accept the city officers' reports?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Visitors wishing to approach? Seeing none, moving on. Consideration of proposed legislation for the first time?
Proposed ordinance number 08-2022 reimbursing sufficient monies in the amounts of 20% from the sewage disposal fund, 20% from the waterworks fund, 20% from the solid waste management fund, and 20% from the stormwater utility fund for the benefit of the city's general fund to defray 2021 operation costs of the city of Bucyrs municipal offices and authorize and directing the city auditor to draw thereupon, therefore, and declaring an emergency. Proposed ordinance number 10-2022 vacating a street being 128.13 feet in length on the west side and 128.21 feet in length on the east side and 16.51 feet in width beginning at the south end of Inez Street between part of outlet 106 to the east part of outlet 107 to the south and in lots 1106, 1107, and 1108 to the west. Proposed ordinance number 11-22 an ordinance amending and supplementing section 919.05 of chapter 919 Reservoirs Title III Water Part IX Streets Utilities and Public Services Code, the codified ordinance of the city of Bucyrs, Ohio. Proposed resolution number 205-2022 authorizing and directing the Bucyrs Public Service Safety Director on behalf of the city of Bucyrs, Ohio, to advertise for bids and to enter into a contract or contracts not to exceed 605,000 with the lowest and best bidder or bidders for the Splash Park Unger Park Trail and Amalar Park Path Project. And finally, authorizing and directing the Bucyrs City Auditor to draw a warrant or warrants in payment, therefore, from the appropriate appropriation or appropriations and declaring an emergency. Proposed resolution 206-2022 authorizing and directing the Bucyrs Public Service Safety Director on behalf of the city of Bucyrs, Ohio, to advertise for bids to enter into a contract or contracts not to exceed 1.6 million with the lowest and best bidder or bidders in connection with the furnishing of the necessary labor, materials, and equipment to improve the portions of the streets and alleys identified on the attached exhibit A referred to as 2022 Millen pave program. And to the extent that appropriate funds permit such other portions of the street and alleys for which the city of Bucyrs is responsible for maintenance or inflammation as council may specifically approve, finally authorizing and directing the Bucyrs City Auditor to draw a warrant or warrants in payment, therefore, from the appropriate appropriation or appropriations and declaring an emergency.
All right. Do I have a motion to accept these as the first reading?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Referring back to the originating committees, proposed ordinance 08-2022 referred back to Finance, proposed ordinance 10-2022 referring back to Plating, proposed ordinance 11-2022 referring back to Health and Safety, proposed resolution 205-2022 referred back to Public Lands and Buildings, and proposed resolution 206-2022 referring back to Plating. Any public participation?
I came to Young Perk major in the newspaper. If it be bigger, it'd catch more eyes to look at.
I'm sure.
That's true.
Vicki Deshaun, 1108 Hill Crest Drive, Bucyrs. Ordinance number 8-2022. The numbers do not add up to 366,994 dollars and four cents. I know where the error is. I just don't know how receptive you are. Do you need telling you where it's at or do you want the auditor to figure out where the mistake is? Auditor, I'm looking at the paper that the auditor gave to council on January 19th, 2022, or its dated January 19, 2022. You take a figure of 118,078.52 and multiply that by 75%. You come up with 88,558.89, not 88,558.23. And by changing that figure, then you arrive at the 366,994.04 figure. Then resolution number 205, 2022. If you'll notice in the caption, it just refers to entering into contract or contracts not to exceed 605,000 dollars. At the January 27th, 2022 Special Finance Committee meeting, a motion was made by Myers with a second by Spiegel to agree with the request for legislation from Public Lands and Buildings not to exceed 275,000 dollars for the Splash Pad, not to exceed 187,000 dollars for the Amalar Trail, and not to exceed 143,000 dollars for the Unger Trail for a grand total not to exceed of 605,000 dollars. And that's a quote taken right from the audio recording. I'm questioning why are we not identifying the not to exceed figures in the caption and in the body of the legislation? Because that is what was in the motion.
Okay. Is there any others? Yes, ma'am.
He also just said to go to-
Bids not to enter contract to find out what was out there. That was stated that day, too. We weren't doing anything but seeing what was out there and if we could do anything with this. This now allows them to go into contract. So, I was already questioning that as well. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We promised to come back once we got the bids.
This doesn't say that.
We promised to come back to council. I don't think, I'm not sure you were there the next meeting.
This doesn't say that. This says and go into contract. That doesn't say come back to council.
Take out the language of citizenry to contract.
All right. I think we need to recess while these corrections are made. Get this taken care of. So, we're going to recess at 7:38. We're reconvening at 8:00 p.m. For consideration of proposed legislation for the first time?
I-
Okay.
Behindanded you guys all of them.
Ordinance number 08-2022 reimbursing sufficient monies in the amounts of 20% from the sewage disposal fund, 20% from the waterworks fund, 20% from the solid waste management fund, and 20% from the stormwater utility fund for the benefit of the city's general fund to defray 2021 operation costs of the city of the, of Bucyrs municipal offices and authorizing and directing the city auditor to draw thereupon, therefore, and declaring an emergency. The numbers down below. Council members and clerk, 96,035.23. Legal advertising, 7,445.10. Mayor, 41,328.51. Auditor, 88,558.89. Treasurer, 8,986.88. And law director and assistant, 124,639.43 for a total of 366,990- I'm sorry. If you want me to read off this if you want me to-
Madam President-
Yes, sir.
That piece and the other piece, you'll need to pursue the Bucyrs Codified Ordinance 111.19, suspend the rules of council, allowing it to be amended and then read on the floor and then proceeded to pass in an emergency. So, you need to suspend, suspend rule 111.11, requiring the amended version to go back to committee and come back out of committee.
Do I have that?
Probably not.
All right. Now, that suspension is second or third reading.
Can you just leave a motion and a second to suspend the local council rule, specifically rule 111.11, requiring the amended, amended legislation come back out of committee?
All right. Do I so have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right.
Then you can proceed.
What am I proceeding with? I read it for the first reading.
Yeah, so you need somebody to accept that first.
Okay.
For a motion and a second to accept.
I need a motion and a second to accept this as the first reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
You need a motion and a second on 205, 2022 to suspend rule 111.11 and allow the amended form to be read today for the first reading. Without having to come back out of committee.
Do I so have a first?
I make a motion.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Go ahead and read that one.
Proposed resolution number 205-2022 authorizing and directing the Bucyrs Public Service Safety Director on behalf of the city of Bucyrs, Ohio, to advertise for bids not to exceed 275,000 for the Splash Park, 187,000 for Unger Park Trail, and 143,000 for the Amalar Park Path Project and declaring an emergency.
That's, you got it backwards. The Amalar Park should be 187 and Unger Park is 143. I'm sorry to interrupt you. Before you wrote on that, though, those are the wrong numbers. It's the Unger Park Trail-
We can amend that here.
And the Amalar Park Trail is 187.
These two numbers are transposed.
They need to be-
Yep.
Okay. I could do it real quick.
All right, we're going to recess at-
While, while you're doing that, remove page one from one from the top.
Okay. All right. All right, we're reconvened at 8:12. And, okay, take these papers here. We have a first and a second. Carried motion to suspend the local rule 111.11 to allow for the amended version of 205-2022 to be read in its amended form without first referred to the committee and report back to council. So, you would go ahead and read it?
Okay. Proposed resolution number 205-2022 authorizing and directing the Bucyrs Public Service Safety Director on behalf of the city of Bucyrs, Ohio, to advertise for bid not exceeding 275,000 for the Splash Park, 140,000 for the Unger Park Trail-
43.
Huh? Oh, 143,000, I'm sorry. For the Unger Park Trail and 187,000 for the Amalar Park Path Project and declaring an emergency.
All right. Do I have a first to accept this as a first reading?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. So, proposed ordinance 08-2022 is referred back to Finance, correct?
Yep.
And proposed resolution 205-2022 is referred back to Public Lands and Buildings. Committee report on pending legislation. 206?
Oh, we have to read 206.
Do we? Did we not read that the last time?
We read it as a first reading. If we test it as an emergency, we have to refer it back. I could be wrong.
Do you have 206 or?
It was read.
What's that?
Is that what your question was? It was read. It has to be referred back.
Yeah, she did that fine.
Yeah, because we stopped it. 205. Proposed resolution 206-2022 is referred back to Plating. Committee report on pending legislation, proposed ordinance 08-2022 annual enterprise funds reimbursement finance.
Finance is favorable to the annual enterprise fund reimbursement. Proposed ordinance 08-2022.
Thank you. Proposed ordinance 10-2022 to vacate portion of Inez Street, Plating?
Plating is favorable to ordinance, proposed ordinance 10-2022 to vacate portion of Inez Street.
Proposed ordinance 11-2022 update and amend BCO 919.05 Health and Safety?
Health and Safety is favorable to proposed ordinance 11-2022 updating and amending BCO 919.05.
Proposed resolution 205-2022 advertise for bids for the ARPA projects, Public Lands and Buildings.
Public Lands and Buildings is favorable to proposed resolution 205-2022.
Proposed resolution 206-2022 advertise bids for the 2022 Millen pave, Plating?
Plating is favorable to proposed resolution 206-2022 advertise bids for 2022 Millen
Further consideration of proposed ordinance 08-2022 for the second and third readings of proposed ordinance 08-2022, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Second. Ms. Sherrick.
Who was the first?
Wireball. Mr. Wireball.
McKeever?
No, Wireball.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
Wireball was first.
Oh, okay.
So, Wireball was first.
Sherrick was second.
Yes.
Okay, sorry. All right, Wireball?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 08-2022?
So moved.
McKeever?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Ordinance number 08-2022 is duly adopted. Proposed resolution 205- that should be 2022. For the second and third readings of proposed resolution 205-2022, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Wireball?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution 205-2022?
So moved.
Who's this, Young used that? Potter?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Resolution 205-2022 is duly adopted. Proposed resolution 206-2022 for the second and third readings of proposed resolution 206-2022, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare emergency?
So moved.
Oh, second.
Wireball?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel? Oh, sorry, sorry. Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution 206-2022?
So moved.
Second.
Sherick first.
Okay. Sherick?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherick?
Yes.
Do we have any old or unfinished business? We do need to discuss Thursday's meeting with the pending weather coming through. It's up to you guys to consider canceling the meeting.
Anybody that's out of town?
If you do, don't say anything.
Well, no.
My only question I had was, should that happen? The piece for consent for the annexation, how is that impacted, and what would we need to do about that, was my only question.
So, the consent or objection to the annexation needs to be filed with the county by February 4th, which would be Friday, if you're counting 25 days after it was filed. But that was one of those things where the only agreeing parties would be the city, the county, myself, and the township. And if you don't consent to it, or if you don't object to it, you're deemed to have consented to it. And kind of like last time, you could put a whereas, there is a natural snow accumulation which caused us to be unable to meet and do this in a timely manner, however you want to do it.
Can we play it by ear with that, as far as...
Well, we have to give notice that we're not going to.
Sure.
Be in session. Ms. Sherick?
I was going to say, how much notice do we do with an emergency? I mean, because if we don't end up getting hit with all that that we're supposed to, I mean, we can all get in here. But if we do, I mean, should we have a backup date?
That was where I was going with that question.
I say like, need Monday, if, like, if the... It hits the sham.
I mean, and I think in all technicality, you don't have to cancel the meeting till a minute before the meeting, but I think you owe it to us and to the public to let people make their plans accordingly. If that's...
Because I was going to say, I think it's, we would only be canceling the meeting if we were, like, under a snow emergency level, whatever.
Level three.
Yeah. So, I mean, legally, none of us would, even anybody else wouldn't be allowed out of the room, you know?
That's up to you guys. Who want to do?
Shall we... Is anybody free for Monday? If we have to reschedule?
Is there a need to meet on Monday versus just waiting the two weeks? This is my next question.
Well, I didn't know if we really should, I mean, even though it's late, go ahead and do that stuff for the annexation.
Well, you're already past the deadline.
But that's what I said, even though...
So if you did a whereas on this...
Even though it's late, I mean, if we were planning on saying something, it would still look good because, you know, whereas, we had been unable to meet, you know? Waiting two weeks makes us look kind of like we didn't care. I'm just, I mean...
But then the law director say that if we didn't pass it, it goes into effect anyhow?
Yeah.
It's deemed consent if you don't pass it.
So that's a... If we can't meet, it's going to go, right? In your opinion?
I don't want to keep it scheduled unless we have a level...
Right.
It's a level three.
Can we say, we'll make it, have you make a decision prior to, or somebody make a decision prior to noon on Thursday?
I will be in Columbus with my son being at...
Yeah.
Right.
I'd say not till 3:00 o'clock, I'd make a decision. Probably. Because, you know, noon could...
I'd say, yeah, because they can do a whole lot with the roads between noon and 3:00.
But between 1:00 and 5:00 is when it's supposed to be coming down.
One inch an hour.
But, I mean, exactly. So we wouldn't even know it knew.
That's right.
President?
Yes.
You're going to be in Columbus. Do you want to designate some member here to make the call?
It's a committee meeting, so it would really fall on each committee chair if you're doing it that way.
Of course. I mean, if we have a level three in the city hall, it will be closed.
Right.
If it's level one, we meet. If it's two or three, we don't.
I agree.
I'm good with that.
Good with that?
Yep.
All right.
Is there any of the referrals that need to be done?
No.
Right. Yeah, we just got those new referrals.
They have to be referred on that? Is there a timeline on those?
Were there any others that you could ask for an emergency?
The salt bid is awarded, right?
Yeah, salt bid. Salt bid, North Robinson.
We would have to request a special meeting if we did it sooner, so you guys could check on that and let us know if we needed to call special meeting. Monday might work.
That's what I was going to say. I mean, if we can just have a backup day, I mean, that way, I hate not...
Yeah. I'd say let them check to see if any of that has time constraints, and if so, and if not, can wait till the 17th.
Well, you know, I'll check your emails. I'll do it by...
So, level one, we're doing. Okay. So referrals, we're looking at the annexation of 1145 West Mansfield Street to plating, the salt purchase to service and finance, ambulance building to public lands and buildings and finance, North Robinson water line expansion to service and finance, and the traffic light project I didn't write down...
Health and safety.
To health and safety and finance.
Point order, the annexation of 1145 West Mansfield. Are we considering that an open project, or are we going to vote now to refer that? Because that's the only one tonight we didn't vote on.
That's an open project, right?
Well, it was referred previously, but legislation came out of it that we had to do, so lawyers' opinion matters. I would.
I'll refer it.
To...
Plating.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. All right. I need a motion and a second to enter into executive session at 8:26 PM to discuss pending and imminent legis...
Litigation.
Litigation. That's not what that says. All right, second?
Second.
All right. We are in executive session at 8:26.
Point of order, need to vote with roll call vote?
Roll call vote. McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
We are in executive session at 8:27. Okay. It's 9:10. Do I have a motion to come out of executive session?
Second.
Sherick?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Young?